Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
It's my pleasure as the town moderator to call the 2019 Rockingham Town Meeting/District Meeting to order. This would be a good time to turn off your cellphones and pagers unless you're an emergency responder. So, anything that's gonna make a beep, a whir, a ring, or anything else, it'd be a good time to turn them off, including your neighbor. If you will turn to your town report, hopefully you all picked up one in the front hall if you didn't have one already. And I'm gonna ask Susan Hammond, the Chair of the Select Board, to direct your attention to the dedication at the front of the town report. Ms. Hammond?
Thank you. As many of you know that Carrie Bennett retired this year after many, many years here at the town, and we all miss her greatly. So, we dedicated the town report to her this year. And it says, "On November 30th, 2018, after 23 years of dedicated service, Carrie Bennett retired from the town of Rockingham and the village of Bellas Falls. Carrie began her municipal career on November 6, 1995, in the Public Works Department. In December 2002, she moved into the position of Executive Assistant, where she remained for the next 16 years until her retirement. Throughout the years, Carrie became a vital part of the day-to-day operations of the town and village. Carrie was born in Rockingham Memorial Hospital. She attended school at St. Charles from K through 8th grade, spent three years at the old high school, now the middle school, and was a member of the first class to graduate from Bellas Falls Union High School. She raised her son Brian here, and throughout his years in school, she was a constant face in the crowd cheering him on through countless events from baseball, basketball, football, marching band, stage band, jazz band, and pep band, just to name a few. She volunteered for numerous committees and worked in one capacity or another for every event Brian was involved in. She has been an active member of the Bellas Falls Emblem Club, as well as a longstanding member of the Legion Auxiliary. Throughout the years, Carrie has had many titles: Recording Secretary, Village Clerk, Executive Assistant, just to name a few. And although she has always enjoyed the title of Mom, it is the title of Grammy that she joyfully embraces now. She is currently a full-time grandmother, spending as much time as possible with her granddaughter Lily Joy and her grandson Grayson Joy. We understand that this new role has interfered with the one goal Carrie had hoped to accomplish once retired, which was just to be able to take a nap during the day. Although we happily congratulate Carrie on her retirement, we have a tremendous sense of loss as well. Carrie was our go-to person for the everyday operations and the needs of the town and village, and we miss her knowledge and expertise more than we can say. It is with great appreciation, love, and friendship that we wish her well. If her grandchildren receive a fraction of the time, guidance, and dedication she gave to Rockingham and Bellas Falls, they are most fortunate indeed." So unfortunately Carrie couldn't make it here tonight, but we'll give this maybe to Barb to hand over. See ourselves this week.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you. You will note that we have cordoned off several rows in the back of the theater. There's, we've extended the stage, there's gonna be a stage production coming up here later this month, and so we ran out of room in front of the front row of seats, so they have put us all up here on stage. That makes the back of the room even darker, so we have cordoned off those seats so we can again bring you all down front so we can see you. We have adequate seating in the rest of the hall, of course. If you plan to participate in any way this evening, please join us and have a seat. You should note that I will not recognize or call on anyone standing behind the rail or behind the, at the top of the aisle, nor will your votes be counted. You're gonna have to actually be in the hall for that. When you came in and you went through the checklist, you should have received your green card, which entitles you to vote if we have a division, a standing vote this evening. So make sure if you're checked in, you did pick up your ballot. We may have to use those before the night's over. We have some accessible seating down here in the front, we have some in the way back as well. So if you need any kind of accessible seating, please use those designated areas for us. In the event of an emergency, please note there are five exits. We have one on either side of me, we have one back to your right at the rear of the hall, one to your left at the rear of the hall, and the main entrance where you all came in. The lights will stay on, or they'll come on during an emergency. Hopefully we won't have to use those tonight as well. Basic rules of order. As always, the meeting will be conducted according to Robert's Rules of Order, except as modified by state statute. You can't change the state law, but you can override Robert's rules by a two-thirds majority vote of the Assembly. General Robert has pages of rules for decorum and during debate. I hope that it will not be necessary to remind you to conduct yourselves in a civil and polite manner. As my good friend and longtime moderator Mike Hardy liked to remind us every year, "We arrived as neighbors and friends, and we will all leave as such." So keep that in mind during the course of the debate tonight. Please stand if you're able and state your name when recognized. You will have to forgive me if I do not call on everyone by name, but I'll do my best. We have runners with microphones, so please wait until one of them reaches you before you begin to speak. Everybody thinks they have a very loud voice, but I can tell you, the last person I remember at this meeting who did not need a microphone was Jim Bigelow, and he hasn't been to a meeting in 35 years. So wait for the microphone, use it so we can all hear what you have to say this evening. Please address your comments and questions to me as the moderator, and I will either answer them or redirect them to someone who can respond. Only registered resident voters may speak unless by leave of the Assembly, which requires a two-thirds vote if there is an objection. Unless there is an objection, I will assume that there is a leave of the Assembly for town and school officials who may not be resident voters to address the Assembly for purposes of explanation or clarification during their respective portions of the meeting. Those of you who are eligible to vote were given the voter cards. That allows us to identify you as a voter. If we have a standing vote, the JPs will be counting those, so make sure you keep those handy. On a paper ballot, the clerks will mark your card as you pass through the line. If we have a paper ballot, we will come down the aisle to your left, pass in front of the stage where the JPs will direct you where to cast your ballot, and then head back up the aisle on the right side of the auditorium. Those articles requiring an Australian ballot vote tomorrow will be taken up for discussion only, and no action other than discussion will take place here this evening. I will strive to make any rulings that I am called upon to make as impartially and as correctly as I can. Any ruling of the moderator can be challenged immediately after the ruling. I will explain my ruling, and if you are not satisfied, all it takes is a request to challenge the ruling and put it to a vote of the Assembly. Debate on the motion to appeal the ruling is generally in order. In keeping with our usual custom of alternating the town and school district meetings, this year we are starting with the town, felt to be followed by the school district meeting when we conclude. You must be recognized by the moderator to address the Assembly. I will try to recognize all of those who speak in an orderly fashion, getting around the room once before returning to anybody who wishes to speak a second time. A person may only speak twice to an issue, and is limited to 10 minutes total. We rarely have to enforce that rule, but keep it in mind. I hope you can be brief and not feel the need to use up all your time or rehash the topics that you or someone else has already covered. I will read each article in order, and then ask what action you wish to take. A motion must be made and then seconded to take up an article. I will then restate the article before the discussion begins. Once we've concluded discussion, I will restate the article one more time before the vote. In most instances, only two amendments may be allowed to a main motion. That is, one amendment to the main motion and one amendment to the amendment. And we then take those up in reverse order. We would take up the Second Amendment if there is one. If that fails, we move back to the First Amendment. If that fails, we go back to the main motion. If either amendment passes, that then becomes the next preceding amendment or motion. So if the amendment to the amendment passes, that becomes the amendment. If the amendment passes, that then becomes the main motion, and we vote on the motion as amended. By state statute, once voters have acted on a question and taken up the next item of business, they cannot reconsider the action at this same meeting. You would have to wait for another meeting in order to do that. Voting will normally be by voice vote unless the Chair is in doubt, in which case there will be a division. Any voter may call for a division, that is, a standing vote with your card, as long as we have not stated the next item of business. Any voter may also move for a vote by paper ballot during the debate before we have moved on to the next order of business, in which case the vote will be by ballot if the call for the ballot is sustained by at least six other members. So one person to call for a paper ballot, we need six to support that in order to have the paper ballot. Action under other business, which comes at the end of the meeting, cannot require the expenditure of funds, nor can it be binding upon the town. Any action under other business is advisory only. On stage this evening, we have, from my left and your right down the line, Town Clerk Kathleen Nihock, Municipal Manager Wendy Harrison, Board Chair Susan Hammond, Board Member Peter Golick, Board Member Doreen Aldrich, Board Member Stefan Golick, and Board Member Gaetano Putignano. Article 1 is the election of officers, and by law, that will occur tomorrow during the all-day Australian balloting. It is not a topic for discussion this evening. The Board of Civil Authority, which is responsible for the conduct of elections, has voted to extend the voting hours tomorrow and in the future. So tomorrow, the voting, the polls will open at 8:00 a.m. rather than our traditional 9:00 a.m., which will give additional voters the time to come in first thing in the morning. By law, by state law in Vermont, all the polls close at 7:00 o'clock. So tomorrow, the polls will be open from 8:00 in the morning until 7:00 in the evening. And I hope you all come to the polls tomorrow. Town of Rockingham, Annual Town Meeting, March 4. The legal voters of the Town of Rockingham and Town of Rockingham School District are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Town Hall Auditorium, Bellas Falls Opera House. In the town on Monday, March 4, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. to act upon all matters which may be voted upon by acclamation and not otherwise to be voted upon by Australian ballot. And then to adjourn to the Masonic Temple at 61 Westminster Street at 8:00 a.m. on Tuesday, March 5, 2019, to vote by Australian ballot on Article 1. And again, I will read Article 1, which will be passed over until tomorrow. Article 1, To Elect Town Officers and Town School District Officers as Required by Law. Article 2, To Receive and Act Upon the Reports of the Town Officers for the Past Year. Ms. Aldrich?
Mr. Moderator, I move to receive and act upon the reports of the town officers for the past year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Article 2, To See if the Town Will Receive and, the voters will receive and act upon the reports of the town officers for the past year. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will put it to the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
To receive and act upon the reports of the town officers for the past year, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and the article is adopted. Article 3, Shall the Voters of the Town of Rockingham Authorize the Select Board and Treasurer to Borrow Money from Time to Time in Anticipation of Tax Collection or Payment of Money Due the Town from the State of Vermont for Highway or Other Purposes or Payment to the Town from Federal Funds. Ms. Hammond?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters of the Town of Rockingham authorize a Select Board and Treasurer to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of tax collection or payments of monies due to the town from the State of Vermont for highway or other purposes or payment to the town from federal funds.
A second. Do I hear a second? Okay, thank you. Article 3, Shall the Voters of the Town of Rockingham Authorize the Select Board and Treasurer to Borrow Money from Time to Time in Anticipation of Tax Collection or Payment of Money Due the Town from the State of Vermont for Highway or Other Purposes or Payment to the Town from Federal Funds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, are you ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have adopted Article 3. Article 4, Shall the Voters of the Town of Rockingham Authorize the Select Board to Seek Out and/or Accept Funds Available from Non-Property Tax Revenue Sources and to Spend Those Funds in Appropriate Ways After Required Public Input. Mr. Stefan Golick?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 4, Shall the Voters of the Town of Rockingham Authorize the Select Board to Seek Out and/or Accept Funds Available from Non-Property Tax Revenue Sources and to Spend Those Funds in Appropriate Ways After Required Public Input.
Do I hear a second? Thank you. Article 4, Shall the Voters of the Town of Rockingham Authorize the Select Board to Seek Out and/or Accept Funds Available from Non-Property Tax Revenue Sources and to Spend Those Funds in Appropriate Ways After Required Public Input. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have adopted Article 4. Article 5, Shall the Voters of the Town of Rockingham Raise and Appropriate the Sum of $6,213,867 to Pay the Indebtedness of the Town, Repair and Maintain Highways, and Pay All Other General and Regular Expenses of the Town, Beginning July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, with $5,035,306 to be Raised by Taxes. Mr. Peter Golick?
Mr. Moderator, Article 5, Shall the Voters of the Town of Rockingham Raise and Appropriate the Sum of $6,213,867 to Pay the Indebtedness of the Town, Repair and Maintain Highways, and Pay All Other General and Regular Expenses of the Town, Beginning July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, with $5,035,306 to be Raised by Taxes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Article 5, Shall the Voters of the Town of Rockingham Raise and Appropriate the Sum of $6,213,867 to Pay the Indebtedness of the Town, Repair and Maintain Highways, and Pay All Other General and Regular Expenses of the Town, Beginning July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, with $5,035,306 to be Raised by Taxes. Is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Goldman?
Leslie Goldman, I'm just curious to know where the other million comes from.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Where the other million comes from?
I'm gonna let the Municipal Manager answer that?
That is from primarily state funding and grants and fees that we charge.
Any other questions? Hearing none, are you ready for the vote? Oh, Mr. Wright?
Jonathan Wright, I'd like to make a motion that we reject this budget at this time in full and send it back to the Select Board for consideration.
Do we have a second? We have a second. Motion is to reject the budget in its entirety?
In its entirety.
And send it back to the Select Board for further review?
For review.
Okay. Do you have the amendment in mind? Is there any further discussion? John, do you wish to address that?
Before we go and raise taxes again for 2%, I think that we can do a lot better with looking for efficiencies. And instead of continually raising taxes to cover the cost of the municipal government as this comes up, I think that it's the duty of the Select Board to look for ways for cost savings, to look for efficiencies, to put more time and effort into that instead of continually raising the cost. We, as a community, our grand list has been flat for the last 20 years. And if you don't understand what the grand list and how that affects your tax rate, that's the taxable value that the town is worth. So as the cost of municipal government goes up and your grand list stays flat, that means your tax rate continues to rise. Before we continue to raise the cost of municipal government, we really need to address the baseline of the grand list, and we need to start making improvements there to be able to afford the costs that we keep incurring. I would rather, instead of making a motion to cut the budget by a figure or a percentage, I think it's more, I think it's prudent to send this back to the Select Board, the incoming Select Board that's there, and allow them the opportunity to see where they can make some efficiencies and where they can make some cuts. If we were to go in and just make a motion to drop the budget by, say, $250,000, that doesn't really give them much of an option on where that money is gonna come from, it's just gonna be across the board. I don't wanna throw out a number without having all the information, and I think the most prudent thing at this time is to send it back to the Select Board. I understand this would involve having another vote on this, there would be a special town meeting, but I think the cost of that is nominal compared to the savings that we can possibly receive in the long term. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? As the moderator, let me explain to you procedurally how this may work, or will work. Essentially, the motion is to reject the budget. If we did not have the amendment, and the budget itself just came up for a vote, and the motion to adopt the budget did not pass, you would have rejected the budget in its entirety. So this amendment will have the same effect if you approve the amendment as it would have in simply rejecting the budget. So, and I understand your intent, John. I think there's two ways to get to that, but hearing no objection to the amendment, are you ready for the vote on the amendment? All right. The amendment is, oh, where? Oh, sorry.
Susan Williams, it's just a question, how much would the budget have to be cut to make it the same as last year? Does anybody have a figure on that?
Again, I will look to the Municipal Manager, who may look to the Finance Director.
If you received the memo that was out there, it says that one cent is approximately $46,000 and change, I can't remember where that says that, $45,821, so it's about $150,000. Am I doing the math right? Yes. Would have to be cut. And I just wanna add also that, I mean, we have these budget meetings starting in November, and we go through this budget as a board, line by line, and we do make an effort to cut where we can. And we have, if you also look at the menu, see that there are cuts, I mean, the menu, the memo, that there are cuts. I mean, the largest impact on the budget for this year is in personnel. It's a 2% negotiated with our union raise across the board. So to level fund, we would have to do a lot of drastic, to make what we would have to meet for union obligations.
Does that answer your question? Mr. Reese? Ellen, back to you.
Ellen Howard, I have a question. This is talking about the overall budget. Does that impact the subsequent articles that have dollar amounts involved in them because they are eventually included in the budget?
If we reject, if we reject the budget, then we have no ability to pay for the articles following the budget. The budget drives the other articles. Those individual articles will fall under the budget. If we have no budget, we have no other funding.
So we wouldn't be voting on those subsequent articles?
Let's see how this article goes before I make a ruling on that.
Sorry, Ray, I just had to ask.
Jumping ahead, but that may be, that may be the result. Mr. Reese?
Yeah, Paul Reese, like I said, I'm, almost all the meetings, I watch different things, and I actually agree with Jonathan that the grand list has not grown, but also watching the Board members work very, very hard to watch every item, I have to kinda go with their decision because they did go over everything. But on a personal note, I do want the grand list to grow. I says, I can no longer jump on property taxes, I'm $2,000 behind this year. Last year, I was behind, never in my life did I ever have so much trouble keeping up with water rates, with the town taxes. Something's gotta give here. We either gotta get some help from the state or something. We cannot continue to grow budgets without the grand list growing. I just wanted to bring that up.
Ms. Wright?
Thank you. I guess I can stand. It's not quite accurate to say that the increase of budget is based upon the union negotiated wages because in reality, two positions were added to this budget in the last year. That themselves would actually cover more than $150,000 in reduction. And in reality, if you take a look at page 54 and 55, you'll see that we have $230,000 in delinquent taxes. Those delinquent taxes would more than cover the increase in the budget for tonight. So I would say, even though, yes, I'd say they worked hard at these budget figures, I also do not think that they were looking for the efficiencies that were necessary to make our budgets more level funded. The village of Bellas Falls does everything they can to make that budget as level funded as possible. We are very conscious and aware of what it takes for our taxpayers to pay those bills. Thank you.
Further discussion on the amendment? Yep. So I have one in the audience, and I'll come back to you. Oh, was that who you were pointing to? Mr. Payne?
Okay. Guy Payne, from Saks Axle's River. Just in response to Deborah's point, one of the positions that was added last year had to do with the facility manager. This person, and many folks may not be aware, this person has the responsibility for managing the energy systems of all town buildings, whether it's the thermal envelope, whether it's the HVAC systems and all. There's incredible savings, and the Board has already expended money for the professional development of the facility manager, and we're starting to reap the rewards of energy efficiency in this building. So I would caution people in terms of turning this budget, I would encourage that this amendment be rejected because we do have on staff people who are now trained to manage the energy efficiency of not just this building, but the police and fire department, which is a disaster in terms of the building itself.
I supported this budget for a couple reasons. Number one, the public work structure position. We have some serious issues in infrastructure coming up, they're gonna need somebody that has some engineering background. That being said, we are looking into efficiencies in that department. We have already talked about a couple of ways to change that position to another alternative, and we're still discussing it. Going forward, I think you're gonna see some changes there. Secondly, the building maintenance person that was brought up, there's seven buildings in this that the town is responsible for. You look at the school budget, and every one of those schools has a maintenance department. They have six or five or six people that work in those departments to take care of those buildings. We have one person. And there's, if you look around the windows in this building right here, the paint's falling off them, you have to be very careful when you open the windows, or it's gonna be on the street. I know my wife worked here, and she's had that problem. She doesn't even open the windows anymore. They had to get someone else from the department, all the highway people, to come in and open the windows. That being said, the heating plant is, the gentleman brought up, needs two circulator pumps, $5,000 bucks apiece. That was discovered by Mr. Bennett. Also, as a note, as far as the tax rate goes, all of you know that CROMA has increased the size of their building. As of April 1st, their assessment will be going up, so that will probably have an effect on the tax rate, which will reduce the tax rate a little further. They have also graciously- They have also graciously afforded not to take a tax stabilization program. We were told when they came and got the matching funds to go and get their loans to do that building, they said they would not entertain, they were part of the town and they figured they ought to pay their due taxes. So a round of thanks should go out to CROMA for stepping up to the plate on that one.
Mr. Fox, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, so a couple of things with the new positions. We see buildings around town like the YMCA, the Robertson Paper Company. We see the impact of deferred maintenance. And just in the years between 2004 and 2017, the grand list dropped $7.5 million from commercial industrial properties falling off the grand list from that type of activity. The Waypoint Center, this building, Rockingham Meeting House, we need to take care of those. And the impact on the grand list of adding commercial industrial properties. We need to have a vibrant town to attract businesses and to keep them. And prices, the cost of things, go up every year. And every time we level fund and we make, we cut programs and services, we're making it less attractive to keep those businesses, attract new ones, and redevelop the properties that'll bring the grand list back up and lower our taxes without gutting the town and the services.
Any further discussion on the amendment to reject the budget? Hearing none? Ready to move the question? We had a second. Yep. All right. Restate the amendment to the main motion is to reduce the budget to zero and instruct the select board to return at a time in the future with a new revised budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nays appear to have it. The nays do have it. We will now take up the main motion. Have we exhausted the discussion on the budget? Are you ready for the vote? Yes.
All right, Rick Cowan from Cambridgeport. The delinquent tax list seems to be remarkably long. Has that gone up, down from past years?
May I answer?
You may, yes, yeah, sorry.
It's probably going to be both of us answering because of what's happening. Yes, it has gone up because we have not had a delinquent sale process, which we are in the process of doing right now. The moderator can expand on that if he wants.
I could address that as well. In addition to my duties as town moderator, I'm also the town agent. And one of my functions as town agent is to conduct the tax sales. With the transition in management at the office, we did not hold tax sales last year. We are now actively sending out the final notices on the delinquencies. Those should be going out within the week. The collection process is in the works. Again, with the transition in management, wasn't a good time to slam our new municipal manager with that. It's a fairly time-intensive process. We've had excellent luck in the past. Once we start the process, when you let it slide for a year or two, people tend to let it slide for a third or a fourth year. When I started doing tax sales some years ago, we had not done a tax sale, I think, in four years. We are at a fraction of what it was then. It is still high. It will be reduced, beginning within the week. So hopefully that addresses the question. Any further discussion on the main motion? I will restate it. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham raise and appropriate the sum of $427,000, I'm sorry, Article 5, let's go back to that one. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham raise and appropriate the sum of $6,213,867 to pay the indebtedness of the town, repair and maintain highways, and pay all other general and regular expenses of the town, beginning July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, with $5,035,306 to be raised by taxes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it and you have adopted Article 5. Article 6. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham raise and appropriate the sum of $427,982 in operating expenses for the support of the Rockingham Free Public Library, $379,250 to be raised by taxes. Ms. Hammond?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 6. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham raise and appropriate the sum of $427,982 in operating expenses for the support of the Rockingham Free Public Library, $379,250 to be raised by taxes.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. To vote on whether or not the voters of the town of Rockingham shall raise and appropriate the sum of $427,982 in operating expenses for the support of the Rockingham Free Public Library, $379,250 to be raised by taxes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, are you ready for the question? Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham raise and appropriate the sum of $427,982 in operating expenses for the support of the Rockingham Free Public Library, $379,250 to be raised by taxes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it and you have adopted Article 6. Article 7. We are coming into a stretch of some 16 or 17 articles, which are what I call the social service agency articles. Every five years, we have to vote on the individual agencies. As you've noticed in the past, some of these are all contained in one or two articles. So we will be going through all 16 or 17 of these articles individually. We will treat them just like every other article. So let's have at it. Article 7. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $5,000 for the support of the Meeting Waters YMCA to provide services to the resident of the town? Ms. Aldrich?
Mr. Moderator, on Article 7, I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $5,000 for the support of the Meeting Waters YMCA to provide services to the residents of the town.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $5,000 for the support of the Meeting Waters YMCA to provide services to the residents of the town? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Oh, Mr. Reese?
Yeah, I'm just a little hesitant because the old building is kind of costing us some money now to take care of some issues there. So I'm just kind of curious if, if the taxpayers fully want to support it because we're kind of in a bind over there on the, the old YMCA building right now.
Any further discussion? Mr. Payne?
Thanks, thanks, Mark. The, the real key behind the $5,000 is really scholarship money for the ASPIRE program and the summer camps. And this year, there's such an increase in the number of people who are in need of the services that the YMCA provides.
Any further discussion over here on the right?
Jonathan Beebe. My son goes to this program and it is, this is, like he said, this is for scholarship money for the children to attend this program. My son himself has received this scholarship from time to time. It provides a safe, reliable program for the children during the summer and after school. So I think we should support this program.
And Paul, for clarification, I don't believe the YMCA still owns the building on Exton Street?
No.
Okay. Oh, yes.
Jim Mullin, point of order. When we passed Article 5, go back to Ellen's question, didn't that include the appropriations for the social service agencies? I'm looking at the budget and it's listing $5,000 for the YMCA already in there. So didn't we already appropriate money for the Y plus the other social service agencies?
We did. And this is your opportunity to have a second bite of the apple. So we're going to, individually, we go through, they have built it into the budget so you understand what the overall budget is. But by state law, we are now addressing each social services agency on their own merits. So if this motion is adopted, that does not impact the budget in addition. If you defeat the motion, it would reduce the budget by $5,000. And that's true, I believe that's true for all the social service agency requests. Any further discussion? In that case, I will restate the motion before the vote. Shall the voters of the town of, was there him? Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $5,000 for the support of the Meeting Waters YMCA to provide services to the residents of the town? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it and you have adopted Article 7. Article 8. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $3,825 for the support of Southeast Vermont Transit, Inc., the Current, to provide services to the residents of the town? Peter Golick?
Mr. Moderator, Article 8. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $3,825 for the support of Southeast Vermont Transit, Inc., the Current, to provide services to the residents of the town?
Do we have a second? Article 8. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $3,825 for the support of Southeast Vermont, Southeast Vermont Transit, Inc., the Current, to provide services to the residents of the town? Is there any discussion? Yes. Sorry, Deb.
It's okay. I'd like to understand why we have an article from them to pay for 30, pay $3,825 when on page 27, they pay taxes to us in the amount of $9,000 or $10,000, whatever it winds up being, as income. So why don't we just reduce the income instead of asking the taxpayers for an additional $3,825? I'm just trying to understand why, especially since we don't get great service from the Current.
Anybody on the board able to address that? Ms. Gagnon?
Yeah, thank you. Hi, Deb. Thank you for your information on the landlord situation for my friend for the fire. I'm sorry you're disappointed that we provide not so great service. When the Current was originated...
Rebecca, could you identify yourself if you did anything?
Yes, I did. I'm the general manager of the Current, Rebecca Gagnon. When the Current was built up in 706 Rockingham, part of the agreement was there was in-kind services for the land for the building to be built. And in agreement with that, the Current agreed to do a pilot, which is payment in lieu of taxes. So the Current each year has had a tax increase and this year, we're up to $10,358 in taxes and we pay over $10,000 in water and sewer. So it was an agreement based on a shared in-kind for the land and the building. And the actual building in part is owned by the town as well, whether it's the land...
Mike with the new mic.
So that's how we arrived at the paying taxes and they've gone up every year with the tax rate. We're not set at a certain rate contracted in 2007. We also provide to the town, we have six or seven, six to seven routes that originate in Bellas Falls and take people to Ludlow, to Braddeboro, to Dartmouth, to Springfield, and circle around town here in Braddeboro, five days a week, five hours a day. Service up to Dartmouth is a few times in the morning, a few times in the afternoon. But we also took care of, we did over 1,900 rides for people with, that need dialysis treatment, that go two times a week, two residents live here in Bellas Falls. And there's a few clients that have cancer treatment five times a week and we transport them free of charge. We also transport a lot of senior citizens to the adult days in Springfield and the adult day in Braddeboro Gathering Place and the Bellas Falls Senior Center here. We, we did over 157,000 rides and 35 of those rides were based out of Bellas Falls. People going to work in Braddeboro on the 53 and people going for treatment to Dartmouth and for services in Springfield and for people needing to work at Ochimo, especially during the seasonal period. Like I said, we're current with our taxes. We also are very dynamic in a sense where we are a community-based organization and we actually are in the, the emergency operations plan for natural disasters and any issues that may arise in the area. We have a facility at 706 Rockingham that is fully supported off the grid if there was ever a situation or an event where this region lost power. And the Current was originally thought to be possibly an EOC, so Occupational Command Center for an Emergency Situation. So in other words, if this whole town lost power and we had, we had an event, you could operate, might have an event right now, you could operate at the Current. We're fully self-sufficient. We have a generator, it's fueled. Also, one thing to think of is if for some reason we had an event and the town, town services and the vehicles, the equipment that operate the town, the fire department, the police department couldn't get fuel, I'm talking an event in the northeast, you could come and actually fuel at our fuel station. So this is, this is just not, you know, a bus that you see going around town. We have 15 volunteers that do 51% of the rides for the elderly and disabled. And like I said, we provided 157,000 trips on our fixed route bus service. So I can answer any, any other questions. And we've not increased, we've level funded the request. We also gather funds from 30 other towns. We employ 30 people and our payroll is $1.3 million. And most of those people have full benefits, medical insurance, dental health, and 401K, and a fairly decent wage between bus drivers, office staff, mechanics, and operations and admin staff. I think I've got it all out.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And any further questions regarding Article 8?
I have something to speak on.
Chief Lake?
Hi, I'm the Emergency Management Director for the town of Rockingham. And the Current is part of our emergency operations plan. If things did go bad, and we have used them before when we had to evacuate, they are who I call. They will help us, they will be there. And I do like the idea they now have fuel so that we could, if something did happen. This is something we have to think about in the event that we have a major event here, the resources that we could use. Thank you, that's all I have.
Any further discussion? Yep. Right here, Mike.
David Gromwold, Bellas Falls. Have you increased the riding rates?
No, we're actually, we're fare-free on 90% of our routes. So we're fare-free on 90% of our routes. All the in-town services are fare-free. There's a dollar rate to go to Braddeboro. Braddeboro has its own system that's a dollar a ride and to get to Dartmouth is $2.
Maybe we should start tracking.
We actually, when we were, we did, when we... We actually, when we were char- we did, when we, we were a management company that came in and worked with the Current, we decided to institute a fare because it was donation-based. Our ridership dropped off probably 50%. And our grant funding is really based on the success of the route and the ridership. So when the ridership tanked, the state, you know, really had to take a look at whether or not, how they were going to fund us. So when we went back to somewhat of a fare-free system, the ridership increased and the grant funding continued.
Any further discussion? Article Eight. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $3,825 for the support of Southeast Vermont Transit, the Current, to provide services to the residents of the town? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and Article Eight has been adopted. Article Nine. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $1,350 for the support of the Vermont Adult Learning to provide services to the residents of the town? Stefan?
Mr. Moderator, Article Nine. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $1,350 for the support of the Vermont Adult Learning to provide services to the residents of the town?
Do we have a second? Thank you. Article Nine. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $1,350 for the support of Vermont Adult Learning to provide services to the residents of the town? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $1,350 for the support of the Vermont Adult Learning to provide services to the residents of the town? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have adopted Article Nine. Article Ten. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $5,000 for the support of the Our Place Drop-In Center to provide services to the residents of the town? Ms. Hammond?
I'm Mr. Moderator. I move Article Ten. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $5,000 for the support of the Our Place Drop-In Center to provide services to the residents of the town?
Do we have a second? Thank you, Peter. Article Ten. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $5,000 for the support of the Our Place Drop-In Center to provide services to the residents of the town? Is there any discussion? Article Ten, restated. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $5,000 for the support of the Our Place Drop-In Center to provide services to the residents of the town? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have carried Article Ten. Article Eleven. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $1,750 for the support of the Women's Freedom Center to provide services to the residents of the town? Mr. Pudigano?
Mr. Moderator. Article Eleven. I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $1,750 for the support of the Women's Freedom Center to provide services to the residents of the town.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Article Eleven. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $1,750 for the support of the Women's Freedom Center to provide services to the residents of the town? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $1,750 for the support of the Women's Freedom Center to provide services to the residents of the town? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have adopted Article Eleven. Article Twelve. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $4,000 for the support of Parks Place Community Center, Inc., to provide services to the residents of the town? Ms. Aldrich?
Mr. Moderator, concerning Article Twelve, I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $4,000 for the support of Parks Place Community Center, Inc., to provide services to the residents of the town.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Article Twelve. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $4,000 for the support of Parks Place Community Center, Inc., to provide services to the residents of the town? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $4,000 for the support of Parks Place Community Center, Inc., to provide services to the residents of the town? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have carried Article Twelve. Article Thirteen. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $4,770 for the support of Southern, sorry, Southeastern Vermont Community Action, SEFC, to provide services to the residents of the town? Peter Golick?
Mr. Moderator. Article Thirteen. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $4,770 for the support of Southeastern Vermont Community Action, SEFC, to provide services to the residents of the town?
Do we have a second? Article Fourteen. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $4,770 for the support of Southeastern Vermont Community Action, SEFC, to provide services to the residents of the town? Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Reese?
I just want to take time to thank SEFC for their services. I actually never in my lifetime used them, but when I was in dire need and my furnace died, it was over 30 years old. I had trouble doing the healthcare exchange. They were some of the nicest people down at that office, and they helped get me through many crises. So I tell anybody to go down there and if they have some type of struggles.
Thank you, Paul. Any other discussion? Article Thirteen. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $4,770 for the support of Southeastern Vermont Community Action, SEFC, to provide services to the residents of the town? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have adopted Article Thirteen. Article Fourteen. Before that, just want to thank our zoning and health officer, Mr. Charles Woz, for providing refreshments during the meeting this evening. That's a first. That's a first in my experience. So, oh, good, from Leesides. Thank you very much. Article Fourteen. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $26,024 for the support of the Visiting Nurse Alliance of Vermont and New Hampshire to provide services to the residents of the town? Stefan Golick?
Mr. Moderator. Article Fourteen. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $26,024 for the support of the Visiting Nurse Alliance of Vermont and New Hampshire to provide services to the residents of the town?
Do we have a second? Thank you. Article Fourteen. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $26,024 for the support of the Visiting Nurse Alliance of Vermont and New Hampshire to provide services to the residents of the town? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have carried Article Fourteen. Article Fifteen. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $21,384 for the support of the Bellas Falls Senior Center to provide services to the residents of the town? Ms. Hammond?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Fifteen. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise and appropriate and expend the sum of $21,384 for the support of the Bellas Falls Senior Center to provide services to the residents of the town?
Do we have a second? Thank you. Article Fifteen. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $21,384 for the support of the Bellas Falls Senior Center to provide services to the residents of the town? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have carried Article Fifteen. Article Sixteen. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of, excuse me, sum of $2,300 for the support of youth services to provide services to the residents of the town? Mr. Pudigano?
Mr. Moderator. Article Sixteen. I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $2,300 for the support of youth services to provide services to the residents of the town.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Article Sixteen. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $2,300 for the support of youth services to provide services to the residents of the town? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have carried Article Sixteen. Article Seventeen. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $2,500 for the support of Springfield-supported housing program to provide services to the residents of the town? Ms. Aldrich?
Mr. Moderator, concerning Article Seventeen, I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $2,500 for the support of Springfield-supported housing program to provide services to the residents of the town.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Article Seventeen. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $2,500 for the support of Springfield-supported housing program to provide services to the residents of the town? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have adopted Article Seventeen. Article Eighteen. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $2,700 for the support of healthcare and rehabilitation services to provide services to the residents of the town? Peter Golick?
Mr. Moderator. Article Eighteen. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $2,700 for the support of healthcare and rehabilitation services to provide services to the residents of the town?
Do we have a second? Thank you. Article Eighteen. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $2,700 for the support of healthcare and rehabilitation services to provide services to the residents of the town? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have adopted Article Eighteen. Article Nineteen. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $4,000 for the support of Greater Falls Connection to provide services to residents of the town? Stefan Golick?
Article Nineteen, Mr. Moderator. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $4,000 for the support of Greater Falls Connection to provide services to residents of the town?
Do we have a second? Thank you. Article Nineteen. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $4,000 for the support of Greater Falls Connection to provide services to the residents of the town? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have adopted Article Nineteen. Article Twenty. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $2,500 for the support of the Bellas Falls Community Bike Project to provide services to residents of the town? Ms. Hammond?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $2,500 for the support of the Bellas Falls Community Bike Project to provide services to the residents of the town.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Article Twenty. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $2,500 for the support of the Bellas Falls Community Bike Project to provide services to residents of the town? Is there any discussion? Chief?
Last year, you all heard me speak on this matter. The kids. The kids are our future. We're all getting older. They're all going to occupy these seats one day, and they will probably remember us speaking kindly about the bike project. The kids that are getting their bikes fixed, the kids that are learning to repair their bikes, the kids. I support this. Thank you all very much.
Is there any further discussion? I will restate the question. Article Twenty. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $2,500 for the support of the Bellas Falls Community Bike Project to provide services to residents of the town? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have carried Article Twenty. Article Twenty-One. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $1,500 for the support of Senior Solutions, Southeastern Vermont Council on Aging? Mr. Pudigano?
Mr. Moderator. I move, Article Twenty-One. I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $1,500 for the support of Senior Solutions, the Southeastern Vermont Council on Aging.
And we have a second? So Article Twenty-One. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of $1,500 for the support of Senior Solutions, Southeastern Vermont Council on Aging? Is there any discussion? Yes. Can we get a mic?
Hi, thank you. I hope you can hear me. I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce us to the community. We have been serving Bellas Falls, Rockingham, and Saxons River for a number of years. But unfortunately, this is the first year we realized we could actually get on the ballot. So just want to give you a real short overview. We have currently a brand-new program that is, anybody 60 or older or disabled in Wyndham and Windsor County can call us and get a free home meds screening. This is an opportunity to make sure that you or a loved one is not taking medication that interact improperly together. So call our helpline at 1-800-642-5119 if you have any questions about health, benefits, anything at all. We have caregiver support and respite grants. We can help long-term Medicaid patients get access to choices for care so they don't have to go into a nursing home. We have a friendly visitor program and a senior companions program that aids in keeping rural housebound people, 60 and older, from becoming too lonely and depressed, which of course keeps them much healthier. We have nutrition and different kinds of health and wellness programs. We have a Medicare specialist and ship specialist who will answer any question you have on Medicare. Our next boot camp is going to be held on March 28th in our Springfield office. We can help people sign up for three squares and fuel assistance. And another brand-new program we just implemented as a partnership with the American Legion in Brattleboro. And that's a vet-to-vet visitor program. And you don't have to be a member of the American Legion. You can be a veteran of any conflict or non-conflict. And we're really excited because the veterans are going to be taking over the entire program eventually and running it themselves. Last thing, and thank you for your patience. Just so you know, in the past year, we served 44 people in the community for case management. We had 57 meals clients. We do not serve or make the meals. That credit always goes to the senior centers and the community groups. All we do is we oversee the program. We administer the menus. We have a registered dietitian who must oversee that. And we had 345 calls to our helpline. And we had 105 calls this year from this area to our ship counselor who gave them really good, unbiased information. Thank you. Thank you and appreciate it.
For the benefit of our extensive home television audience, would you repeat that phone number?
Yes, I would. Call the helpline, one eight hundred six four two five one one nine.
Thank you.
Anytime.
Is there any further discussion? All right, I will restate the question. Shall the voters of the Town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of one thousand five hundred dollars for the support of Senior Solutions Southeastern Vermont Council on Aging? All in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have adopted Article twenty-one. Article twenty-two. Shall the voters of the Town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of five hundred dollars for the support of the Green Mountain RSVP? Ms. Aldrich.
Mr. Moderator. Concerning Article twenty-two, I move that the voters of the Town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of five hundred dollars for the support of the Green Mountain RSVP.
Give me a second. Article twenty-two. Shall the voters of the Town of Rockingham vote to raise, appropriate, and expend the sum of five hundred dollars for the support of the Green Mountain RSVP? Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have adopted Article twenty-two. Article twenty-three. Shall the voters of the Town of Rockingham authorize the select board to borrow an amount not to exceed five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of two pieces of fire apparatus to be housed at the Bellas Falls Fire Department for a period of five years or one hundred and ten thousand dollars if a grant for four hundred and forty thousand dollars is received? Peter Golick.
Mr. Moderator. Article twenty-three. Shall the voters of the Town of Rockham authorize the select board to borrow an amount not to exceed five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of two pieces of fire apparatus to be housed at the Bellas Falls Fire Department for a period of five years or one hundred and ten thousand dollars if a grant for four hundred and forty thousand dollars is received?
Do we have a second? Thank you. I'll restate the article or the motion. Shall the voters of the Town of Rockingham authorize the select board to borrow an amount not to exceed five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of two pieces of fire apparatus to be housed at the Bellas Falls Fire Department for a period of five years or one hundred and ten thousand dollars if a grant for four hundred and forty thousand dollars is received? Peter, do you wish to speak to this motion?
Yeah, I'll stick my neck out. I did support this article when it was mentioned to me. Emergency services, one of our services that everybody has, is able to take advantage of or perhaps not take advantage of. But the intent here is to replace three trucks with these two. So we are going to be downsizing the equipment. That's number one. Number two, the payment for this loan will not be due until 2021, and upon that time, other loans will be expiring, so it should not increase the debt service. I can defer to the fire departments. I see a couple of them out here, so.
Is there any? I'm going to restate the question, and then we will continue the discussion now that the motioner has spoken. Shall the voters of the Town of Rockingham authorize the select board to borrow an amount not to exceed five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of two pieces of fire apparatus to be housed at the Bellas Falls Fire Department for a period of five years or one hundred and ten thousand dollars if a grant for four hundred and forty thousand dollars is received? Yes, Rick. Rick?
Rick Cowan. How likely are we to get the four hundred and forty thousand dollar grant?
Defer to Sean McGinnis, please.
Chief McGinnis. Sean McGinnis, Bellas Falls Fire Chief.
It's hard to say. I'm going to guess not very likely. We applied for it last year. Were turned down. We made it right to the end. We are still in the running. I'm hoping to hear by April, but my guess is probably not very likely.
Further discussion? Yes, Ellen.
Ellen Howard. I just want to clarify the language because it says we're talking about two pieces of fire apparatus to be housed at the BFFD for a period of five years. Now, are we going to take them away in five years, or are we talking about the amount the loan will? It's just the language does not clear.
I made the same observation when I read the warning after it was published. I will defer to the municipal manager.
It could have been written better, yes. No, the fire equipment will hopefully last fifteen, twenty years, but the debt will last five years.
Thank you.
Yes, I apologize for the lack of clarity.
One other question is, I read the article, and then I went online to look up the minutes of the fire committee to see what was recommended, and I did not see any fire committee minutes, so I don't know if there was a recommendation from the fire committee, and I was wondering if that could be explained.
Are there members of the fire committee here who can speak to that?
The fire committee hasn't met regarding the apparatus purchases yet. How it's worked in the past is we brought this about and brought the article about, and then the committee has gotten together and worked on the vehicles later. The reason why we went for this was we had to come up with a grant amount before, before town meeting in order to apply for the grant.
Ms. Goldman, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, my name is Francis Kelly. I live in Darby, on Darby Hill.
Hang on, I've got a speaker down here without a microphone. All right, all right. She's passed the, she's passed the.
This is the Town of Rockingham meeting, not Bellas Falls. I haven't heard a thing about the Town of Rockingham needs a fire truck. What are they going to do? They don't have a truck. And I understand that they won't let the trucks out of Bellas Falls to go to Rockingham, which is wrong because they're Town of Rockingham trucks, not Bellas Falls trucks. They belong to all of us.
Chief, chief, do you? Can you explain the, why the truck will be parked where it will be? Guy Tonlin?
Defer to Guy Tonlin.
Guy Tonlin?
I'm going to defer that question, but what is the year of the vehicle that you're trying to replace? How past due is that from getting replaced? The Town of Rockingham owns the equipment in response to the last question, the vehicles?
The truck that we're looking to replace is nineteen eighty-nine.
When was it supposed to be replaced?
Two thousand fifteen. And the trucks do go to Rockingham. We have never, we actually have offered, if we get this, buy this truck, to send one of our trucks up to Rockingham to cover. So the, I don't know where you get the story, that the trucks do not leave the village. That's incorrect.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Peter.
Mr. Kelly, in reference to your comment as far as Rockingham Fire Department, I think I discussed this with you, done time down to recycle. But the front-line truck in Rockham is gone out of service because of rust issues. They can't operate it, won't pass inspection. We have come up with a Plan B, thanks to the chief, Dennis Jeffrey. The plan is to buy a couple of used ones temporarily to tide us over. In the following year, we're going to apply for a grant to buy another truck, a newer truck for them. Hopefully, we'll be successful at that time. Hope that answers your question.
Any further discussion? Yes, Leslie, come back to your mic.
I'm just curious. I didn't see anything in here about the discussion of the purchase of the trucks. So I don't understand a lot about how the debt's going to be paid, and you were talking about how some debt would be gone and other, this would then take over. So where do we find out about that? I mean, four hundred and forty thousand is quite a lot of money for us without any reports.
The board want to address that?
It is a lot of money, the four hundred and forty. In the handout that was available in the, in the vestibule when you came in, on the third page of that, there's an update on the fire department equipment. The Rockingham situation just happened last week, so we were able to, to meet twice, actually, with, with the Rockingham Fire Department about how to work out an arrangement that would work best for, for both departments, and, and we did, we did come to something that, that is agreeable to all. I can provide you the debt schedule. It wasn't in the, in the warning. You know, next time, we'll, we'll be more clear about that. But we do have a debt schedule that provides for some relief in two years, hence, when this, when the debt, if it's the larger debt, would come due, it would not require an increase in payment. And the finance director might want to add something to this, but if I could just refer to the operating budget pie charts that you received tonight also. It's the last page in the handout. The, we broke out the debt as an item because we did want to call attention to that, and that's something that staff and the select board will be working on more in the coming year, is to look at what's appropriate for our budget in our town as, in terms of level of debt, because we think this might be high. But we did want to point it out so that, so that the town voters are aware of it. And you can see on the pie chart, you see the red section? That's the debt. That includes general fund, highway fund, and the equipment fund, and you can see in the, in the charts below what, what's included in that debt. But we do want to take a good look at that debt with the intention of establishing a long-term capital funding program where we could start putting money aside so that rather than paying interest for everything that, that we purchase, we'll still need to have debt for large, very large purchases such as fire trucks and, and large building improvements, but for the smaller purchases, like the, the rolling stock, we think we could work on a program where we could fund that more out of, out of savings, which would make sense in the long run.
Any further discussion? Yes. Hang on, we'll get you a mic. David, David, I had, sorry, I was looking right over your head. We'll come back to you.
On page eighty-three, it mentions here that there were just two structure fires that the fire department had last, last calendar year and one brush fire. Is that what we're talking about for this expenditure? Is that type of service? Page eighty-three.
That's the Rockingham report that's, but the trucks that we're discussing are, are for the Bellas Falls, because the Town of Rockingham purchase, purchases the fire equipment.
No, we have a hand up over here.
That was page eighty-three and eighty-four? No, yeah, eighty, what is it? Eighty and eighty-one.
Hi, I'm Wayne Blanchard. I was just curious, what, we appropriated some money last year for fire equipment, and I wondered what, did we just not get a grant or something, or I wondered what happened with that money? And unless my, maybe the years fly by too fast for me, but it seemed like it was just two years ago that we appropriated a similar amount of money to buy fire trucks. So I just wondered if somebody could give us an update on what happened the last two years or three years, whatever it's been.
I think I can answer that. I think it's seventy-five thousand dollars still in the fire equipment fund. Still in there. And the two trucks that were recently purchased, one was for Saxons River Fire Department, one was for Rockingham Volunteer Fire Department, and they're both tanker trucks. This is a truck for the Bellas Falls Fire Department who is trying to replace a nineteen eighty-nine piece of fire equipment that is, I forgot the year already, five years past due of being replaced. It's much more than the two structure fires I think you're referring to for Rockingham. As you know, these departments all go to mutual aid. That's what makes this system work when you're dealing with these size departments. And that's, that's, I think I answered the question, the seventy-five thousand dollars that was, I think we put twenty-five thousand in this year, fifty thousand in, was in there last year, that's still in there. I think it's allocated for something separate.
Further discussion? Mr. Reese.
Well, this has actually been educational for me. I never realized that actually the townspeople purchase the fire equipment for the village. Now, that brings into question for emergency purposes and whatever. I also would like these boards to work together, and I honestly believe the town should also help the Bellas Falls Village Police Department purchase their police cruisers and vehicles for emergency management issues because they spend a lot of time outside the village helping Saxons River and the Town of Rockingham.
Any further discussion? Yes, Colin.
Don't we have a replacement schedule in place for, like, because I know when I was on the Board of Trustees for cruisers, we did have a replacement schedule. Also, you said it's nineteen eighty-nine. Chief McGinnis, correct me if I'm wrong, that's Engine Two. What's the other piece of apparatus? Because it says two pieces of apparatus. I, and if you said it, I didn't hear you, so I apologize.
There is a replacement schedule. Actually, Engine Two was scheduled to be replaced in two thousand and fifteen. That's the eighty-nine. That would be the four hundred and forty thousand dollars to replace that pumper. The other thing that we're looking to replace is our rescue truck. Our rescue truck is a nineteen ninety-seven. We're actually looking to down, downsize and streamline what we're doing. It's essentially, right now, we're operating a big box truck. We want to downsize to a truck that's a little bit more manageable in size. It'd be more of a pickup-based truck. It would be cheaper to maintain. It would, by switching to this, if you were looking for future purchases, you would save about two hundred thousand dollars by going this route. The idea would also be to trade in the rescue truck that's a ninety-seven before we have to do any more rust remediation on it, and while we can still get a little bit of equity, the little equity that we have into it, use that as a trade-in on the new truck.
Thank you, chief.
Any further discussion? Do I see a hand? No. All right. I'll restate, restate the motion. Article twenty-three. Shall the voters of the Town of Rockingham authorize the select board to borrow an amount not to exceed five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of two pieces of fire apparatus to be housed at the Bellas Falls Fire Department for a period of five years or one hundred and ten thousand dollars if a grant for four hundred and forty thousand dollars is received? All in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have adopted Article twenty-three. Article twenty-four. Shall the voters of the Town of Rockingham vote to appropriate a transfer of fifty thousand dollars from unassigned general fund balance to the Rockingham Unsafe Buildings Reserve Fund for expenditures to protect the public and/or the community from unsafe buildings? Stefan?
Mr. Moderator. Reading Article twenty-four. Shall the voters of the Town of Rockingham vote to appropriate a transfer of fifty thousand dollars from the unassigned general fund balance to the Rockingham Unsafe Buildings Reserve Fund for expenditures to protect the public and/or the community from unsafe buildings?
Second. Thank you. Article twenty-four. Shall the voters of the Town of Rockingham vote to appropriate a transfer of fifty thousand dollars from unassigned general fund balance to the Rockingham Unsafe Buildings Reserve Fund for expenditures to protect the public and/or the community from unsafe buildings? Discussion. Yes.
Hi, I'm Camilla Roberts, the, one of your listeners, and I am greatly in favor, I'm delighted that that this bright idea, kind of a new idea for us, has emerged in this town and village. And I, the reason, I would, I'm, in our walking around the towns for reappraisals and so forth and going inside of buildings, the difference that occurs in buildings that are eventually so deteriorated that the town has had to make the move to demolish them has resulted in a remarkable spaciousness, solving parking problems, green space that has really elevated the livability where that has occurred. And it's sad that buildings occasionally get to that point, but there have been historically in this village in particular, but I would point to Saxons River also, and some places in Rockingham where, being mill towns and, you know, in those eras when we didn't all have two cars, you know, everybody has their own car, no place to put it, things were crowded. And the population has slightly drifted downward over time. Some of these buildings just don't make sense anymore. And it's daunting to the staff to see this and have to go out and deal with the consequences of a building that's boarded up and really gone to, you know, to become a hazard and nuisance. And now, if there's a fund of fifty-thousand dollars that is available to not hesitate when the right circumstances emerge, and by the way, these were, they're abandoned. People aren't paying taxes on them, they disappear, they can't even find the owner sometimes. I mean, we're not talking buildings that have any hope of revival. These are goners. And I could go out there and list you quite a few more, you know? I'd hate to do it, but I don't think we're done with this particular project. So I'd really like to see the fifty thousand, and I ask Chuck Wise, for example, is fifty thousand enough? And should we be considering amending the article to a higher number, frankly, like seventy thousand? I'm not making the amendment, I'd like to hear from Chuck.
Mr. Wise, are you in the audience? Mr. Wise appears to be absent. Any further discussion? Mr. Reese.
I'm definitely in favor, like I said, of the motion of cleaning up the neighborhood. But I also want the Listers Department to take responsibility for over-appraising properties and driving people out of their houses. I've watched this happen in my dad's development, that he developed like thirty-five beautiful homes, and they taxed them right out of the houses. When they tax these houses at a hundred-and-forty, a hundred-and-sixty thousand, and they foreclose them, and they don't pay their taxes, they go on the auction block for thirty-six thousand dollars and sell. These appraisal rates, even on my house at one time, they were off forty-five thousand dollars. They managed to get six thousand dollars out of the state for taxes and rebate for the same property I have now that I pay five thousand dollars. So if you switch these numbers to lower appraisal rates, I think people can afford to stay in their homes and maintain them, and you won't drive them out of the community.
Mr. Wise is back in the house. You have been singled out by Camilla of the Listers to address whether or not fifty thousand dollars is adequate for the unsafe buildings fund.
Well, you guys caught me trying to hide, and didn't do a very good job of it. The fifty thousand dollars is just a start. Hopefully, year per year, it just starts adding up.
Ms. Howard.
The language at the end says, "to protect the public and/or the community from unsafe buildings." It's rather vague as to what that can be used for. And I'd like a little explanation as to whether this would be used as a loan program to help people to get buildings better, where they can get money from the Wyndham Wizard Housing Trust Loan Program? Or is it a fund of last resort, when the town has to do something such as take buildings down, which is what has happened in the past? This isn't the first time there's been fifty thousand dollars put in the budget. The Select Board did that some years ago. In that year, there were no problems, so the fifty thousand dollars was not spent. But I'm just wondering if this is going to be a loan program, or is this going to be used for those instances where there is no other remedy and a building needs to be removed?
The board want to address that? Or the manager?
Good question. And we did, when we discussed housing in general, we did talk about loan programs. But the intent of this particular item is to address unsafe buildings. So fifty thousand would not be enough, for example, to cover the entire cost typically of, as you know, of one of the buildings. But we were looking at the situation that happened with Church Place, where the town had to scramble, to find funding, to take care of that property. And so this fund would be a seed fund, so that we would have something in the kitty so that we could apply for grant funding, so this could be the match that's often required for grants. But the intent is to work first on the, or to work on the unsafe buildings and the buildings that are beyond repair.
Mr. Golick.
Yeah, I'm hesitant to support this article. The village is the only entity within the town of Rockingham that has an unsafe building ordinance. You recall your history, most of the unsafe buildings have occurred in the village, not in the town. Now the town is on, is kind of set up this fund to try and take care of these issues. We have several of them, that we have, Green Street had two or three of them, the Sakovich House, that was a fire, forty-two Green, the one up on Hyde Hill, that was a house that was ready to collapse into the street, we didn't do something with it. Currently, we have a vacant building and nuisance property ordinance being, working its way through zoning and DRB, correct me if I'm wrong on DRB, that I wrote, and hopefully we'll see that at the board level in April. That will give us an enforcement angle to take care of this. My other fear is that once we set this money up, it's going to open the door for people to just give up and say, hey, town's got the money to take it down, why should I worry about it? They'll walk away from it. So I mean, I'm hesitant to support this article.
Mr. Grinell.
So this is just a Band-Aid to fix a problem that isn't going to be addressed in a long-term situation. If the buildings are in disrepair, they're nuisance, and they're a risk to the public, they should be torn down, and we should be looking at setting up a fund to demolish these buildings and recycle the product on them.
Yes, left. Marty, right up the aisle.
I'm Mary Ann Bennett from Rockingham. I guess what I'm hearing is that these buildings that you're talking about are all in the village. Are there any in the town of Rockingham? Or outside of the village?
Technically, they all are. If you look at the, you know, we're all one town, although you wouldn't know it the way things add out here. You know, we're this village, we're that village, but we all are one town.
I understand that, but are any of these buildings that you're talking about, and I am aware of the ones we've torn down in the past, were all in the village? Are any of the buildings that you are calling hazardous buildings outside of the village of Bellas Falls?
I think the only one I can recall is the one that was on Bezanson's property that was just in the town of Rockingham. If you're familiar with that, it's up near where the Steamtown property. There was an old shack there that was, ended up being actually a health issue because there were vermin and things in there. When they went to take it down, they had to come down.
Is the village going to also provide money to this fund for the buildings that are in the village?
Well, they're in the budget process, and it'd be interesting to see if they do. I think they should share in the cost of this, as the town, you know, the town's picked up the tab on most of this stuff, and, you know, granted, the village taxpayers do pay some money, you know, for town taxes, but I think they should also be putting up a fund, kicking into this fund too, so that it's not all, looks like the town's doing all the paying on this.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes. Mike, right here.
Do we have a list of the buildings that need to come down, and also how many are on that list? If we have a list? Oh, Roberta Stradling.
I don't believe we have a list as yet. I know there's probably three properties up on Terrace up there. We had one down that we took down last year. The town paid for that one, and it's in the village. I think the next three up, I think they're probably going to be on the block pretty clear. We also have the Hitty Green Building, which is, could be an interesting little situation when we get to it. As I understand it, the northern section is the oldest part of that building, and that is technically, might as well consider that gone because a tree's fallen on it. It's not a health hazard, it's an unsafe building. The south part of that building from the office towards Bellas Falls Village probably could be rehabbed and maintenance or something, but it's going to take somebody to step up, pay thirty-six thousand dollars in back taxes at a tax sale to take it.
Further discussion? Yes. Rick?
Rick Cowan, I'm not understanding what "take care" means in this context. Do we pay for the building to be demolished and then the owner retains the property? Or is, have these places by tax sale come into town ownership?
No, these are mainly buildings that have landed on, back to the town because of lack of paying of taxes. So they are on, they are owned now by the town. Or it's a case of, sometimes they have been completely abandoned, and any air or whatever could not be found, and they become a hazard. Either a fire happens, or it just gets too dangerous for the town. And I mean, you see more in the village, obviously, because the houses are much closer together, a hazard, a building is a much more hazardous here, right next to another building than it is in, you know, down a country road in rural Rockingham. It's a different sort of level of hazard. And we've been paying this expense of taking down several of these buildings that has not been, we didn't have a tax, we didn't have a budget line for this, and we had, as the manager said, had to scramble for the money. And this is money that's already in the fund balance that we cannot spend without your authorization. So we'd be moving it from the fund balance into a fund that we could then use for the needs of when we do get faced with another building that has to come down.
Other questions? Yes, right here.
Hi, my name is Laura Sherbaum. I'm a Rockingham resident. I don't have a question, more of a PSA for the Planning Commission, which is revising the town plan. And a lot of issues around housing can be addressed in our town plan, and how we're visioning, how we're keeping our historic properties in the town, and how we're creating housing that is workforce housing for the folks that we want to bring to stay in our community. So the Planning Commission is here tonight. They have information about the upcoming process of getting public input on the town plan process, and I just wanted to encourage all of us, again, to be part of that process as well.
Other questions? Yes, Ellen, sorry.
With the understanding that this is a fund to be used as a last resort to remove buildings, I would urge support of this. In the past, it has been used to remove buildings. The town has taken possession of that property afterwards, whether, you know, foreclosure on a lien, foreclosure, we have gone to court to do that. The town has then, in some instances, subdivided the land and sold it to a butters. We have not made back the full amount, but it has still been worthwhile because that land has been returned to the tax rolls. It has improved the neighborhoods greatly, and actually, the values of the neighboring properties have gone up. So I would urge support for this.
Any further, yes, Colin.
My only concern is this amount of the fifty thousand, that's a very small amount. I mean, it's probably going to cost that to tear down, what would you say, one or two buildings? So I mean, I guess I'm asking the Select Board, what is your goals? I mean, is there a list that you're going after? And are there, what are your goals when the money runs out? Because I mean, I would imagine that this would run out in a, before, you know, our next budget season. Just curious.
Well, we would like to put more money into that fund in the future. Right now, we don't have such a fund established, so this is establishing that fund and getting it started. We also have, if you look at the memo, it does mention the fund balance, and we have to, it's our board policy to keep between sixty and twenty thousand of operating expenses in our fund balance, and we don't want to get below that level. So we have to be careful about what we do take out of fund balance and to put for various needs of the town.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? One more shot, Paul.
I just want people to get a realistic value of actually what these properties cost to clean up. Some of them, brought to my attention, were over ninety thousand dollars to clean up. Some of them, at different meetings, I've heard price tags of one million dollars to clean up, between asbestos and different things. So fifty thousand's a small amount, and we need to build up this kitty, because you're going to be spending millions of dollars cleaning up some of this stuff.
Mr. Moderator? I just want to clarify, that's not sixteen to twenty thousand, it's sixteen to twenty percent of our operating clauses. Shannon probably gave me a look like, what are you talking about? Though our auditors do recommend a higher level at twenty-five thousand. Twenty-five percent, sorry. God, I wish it was just twenty-five thousand, it would be all set.
All right. Are you ready for the question? All right. I will restate the motion. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to appropriate a transfer of fifty thousand dollars from unassigned general fund balance to the Rockingham Unsafe Buildings Reserve Fund for expenditures to protect the public and/or the community from unsafe buildings? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and the motion is carried. Article twenty-five. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to appropriate a transfer of twenty thousand dollars from unassigned general fund balance to the Rockingham Meeting House Capital Reserve Fund for historic preservation? Ms. Hammond?
Mr. Moderator, Article twenty-five, I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to appropriate a transfer of twenty thousand dollars from unassigned general fund balance to the Rockingham Meeting House Capital Reserve Fund for historic preservation.
Have a second, Peter? Thank you. Article twenty-five. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to appropriate a transfer of twenty thousand dollars from unassigned general fund balance to the Rockingham Meeting House Capital Reserve Fund for historic preservation? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and Article twenty-six has, twenty-five has passed. Article twenty-six. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to appropriate a transfer of twenty thousand dollars from the unassigned highway fund balance for a new emergency generator to be installed at the Highway 103 garage? Kay Tunnel?
Mr. Moderator, Article twenty-six, I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to appropriate a transfer of twenty thousand dollars from the unassigned highway fund balance for a new emergency generator to be installed at the Highway 103 garage.
Have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Article twenty-six. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to appropriate a transfer of twenty thousand dollars from the unassigned highway fund balance for a new emergency generator to be installed at the Highway 103 garage? Is there any discussion? Ellen?
Do we know that the generator's going to cost exactly twenty thousand dollars? Because we're transferring the money, we're transferring twenty thousand dollars for specified use for a generator. It's not, you know, I'm just wondering if we're putting too much money in or not enough, enough? Because what do we do if the generator's 15,000 and we've given $20,000?
I agree with responding to that. I, I brought this up. Currently, if the power goes out up there, it's a manual situation, open a 14-foot garage door. We've already had some injuries up there, workman's comp claims. In order to keep the insurance claims down and our insurance rate down, this is an attempt at that. We are not intending to spend 20,000. That's an estimate that we got from a electrical company locally. There are used generators out there or currently there's a brand new, new generator we can buy for $4,000. Stefan and I are both researching this situation and that's, I can guarantee you that probably won't come anywhere near, near that kind of money.
I support this article. I supported the well-being up there. You know, we didn't, we didn't even have a reliable water supply or an adequate water supply. Now they have water up there. But this specific article, it's time to step into the 21st century. You have a fire department that is also housed there, the Rockingham Volunteer Fire Department. So whether it's the highway department with the garage doors or the fire department with the garage doors, the lights and, and the radials, I mean, you know, we need this piece of equipment up there. If you lose power, you know, you're at a severe disadvantage. We need the, we need a generator and I'd appreciate if you'd support it.
I, I'm not against it, I'm just trying to understand, if you word it this way, does that include 20, are you just $20,000 or you can say not to exceed $20,000? There's a difference in how it's worded and would you end up having extra money set aside for a generator that you can buy for $5,000 and you've got $15,000 sitting around because we've designated it for a generator?
Mr. Moderator, could we amend that motion to, to wording? The intent would be the same, but just add the word not to exceed?
Well, the motion is to transfer, not to, not to buy a generator. I mean, it says, a transfer of funds for a new emergency generator. The, the price of the generator is unspecified. So if you want to try to amend that to include, to purchase a new emergency generator for an amount not to exceed $20,000, I think that would do it.
It is specified for the, the highway department though, you said.
Okay.
Yeah. Right, because of the location. Yeah, I was just gonna say, if it's not spent by the end of the year, it would go back into unassigned fund balance, but I wouldn't have any problem if someone wants to amend the motion to say up to 20,000.
Let me ask Ellen, with the understand, with the explanation that any unexpended funds would return to the highway department, would that be adequate for you?
If that's, if that's how it works legally, so we, if we've got extra money, it goes back where it should go and we're doing it the right way.
Let me call in the Finance Director. Look, let me get you a microphone so the Assembly can hear you. And a lot of folks here don't know you yet, Shannon, so introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Shannon Burbeal, the Finance Director. So any of the unused funds, we're only transferring 20,000. Whatever we don't use, we'll go back to the unassigned highway fund.
That's an explanation even I can understand. All right, are you ready for the question? Oh, yes, back row.
Gary Lickway, is that money also included the installation for the generator or is it just 20,000 for the generator?
It includes installation.
Okay.
All right, I will restate, unless there's any other questions? I will restate the motion. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to appropriate a transfer of $20,000 from the unassigned highway fund balance for a new emergency generator to be installed at the Highway 103 Garage? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes appear to have it? The ayes do have it and Article 26 has been adopted. Article 27. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to appropriate a transfer of $340,000 from the unassigned highway fund balance to the Town of Rockingham Highway Improvement Capital Reserve Fund with a transfer contingent on the Bellas Falls Village Corporation Board of Trustees contracting for the Burt Street and Blake Street Water and Sewer Main Improvements? Ms. Aldrich?
Mr. Moderator, concerning Article 27, I move that the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to appropriate a transfer of $340,000 from the unassigned highway fund balance to the Town of Rockingham Highway Improvement Capital Reserve Fund with the transfer contingent on the Bellas Falls Village Corporation Board of Trustees contracting for the Burt and Blake Street Water and Sewer Main Improvements.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Peter. And I will restate it. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to appropriate a transfer of $340,000 from the unassigned highway fund balance to the Town of Rockingham Highway Improvement Capital Reserve Fund with a transfer contingent on the Bellas Falls Village Corporation Board of Trustees contracting for the Burt Street and Blake Street Water and Sewer Main Improvements? Discussion?
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator, I'll speak to this.
Go ahead. We'll come back to you.
This, this article is to deal with the base of this highway, this road. These people up there on Park Street, it's a not very big street, Blake Street, Burt Street, the road is actually breaking apart because when they took some road sand, some samples out of that road, it's nothing but a sand base. So it's not very healthy to have the paving put over a sand base and will end up taking in a few years, having to repave it again. So when they do the sewer and water work up there, the, the plan is to, the paving will be paid for by the contract for the sewer work. And we're just putting in the money to rebuild the bot, the, the base of the road so we don't have to, you know, replace the paving another three or four years after we get done with this project. Trying to do it right the first time.
John, did you have a question? No. Mr. Greenwell? Mike, wait for Mike.
Was that replaced when they did the water and sewer on Griswold Drive, what, 15 years ago?
No, was not. Mr. Hammond still here? He, he has the better details than I have, but I mean, I, I kind of just glazed over it, but he can tell you exactly what the deal is.
Thanks, Mike. 2002, it was the same process. The prior to doing all the work, drainage was done by the highway crew, I think in 2000 and 2001. Then what happened is we reclaimed that material, restored, stockpiled some of that, reused some where we could, but it was all new gravel base prior to doing Grizzle Drive and that's, not Grizzle Drive, excuse me, re-circle, pure circle, the roads up around the area there. But that was a new gravel base up there. And this right, what we're talking about here is there's actually absolutely no gravel base under this road at all. If we continue and do it without replacing the gravel, it will crumble over, probably in 10 to 20 years, it'll be in the same boat.
Any further discussion? All right, I will restate the question.
One second. Hi, Luke McCollough. Will there be an opportunity for residents on those streets to reconfigure or widen driveways? And if so, who would we, who would we talk to about that?
Mr. Hammond, is that in your domain?
Yes, we do have an application for anybody that is looking at doing that, so give us a holler if you want to do that, probably sooner the better. And it will not be done by the project, but it would be good coordination though, especially if you want to move the driveway.
Yes. Mike, right in front of you. Nope, three, three rows up.
Thank you. I'm Susan Williams again. I live on Park Street, so I just want to testify that what they've said about the condition of the road is really true. The article does not mention Park Street, but I've been assured by both Mr. Hammond and Mr. Hines that the project, the article does include Park Street. Right now, in the last week, we've had a sort of a sinkhole develop in front of our house and it's right where our water and sewer lines meet the town lines. And every time the sander or the plow goes over, they're quite heavy, we're a little worried about what's going to happen. And it's been 15 years now since we bought our property and every year, the road has gotten worse, our road, but now Burt and Blake are also horrendous. It's actually unsafe to drive on those streets if you're trying to miss a pothole and a vehicle is coming the other way or there are people walking in the roads, which happens a lot lately with the ice on the sidewalks. It's, it's a dangerous situation, so I please ask everybody to support this article. Thank you.
Yes. Ms. Harrison?
Thank you. I just want to add something real quickly. This article, I, makes sense because it reduces the overall cost to the town. It, it does the work in one project instead of two projects, so the residents who live along those streets aren't going to have to face construction in three, four years after the water and sewer are done. And it also includes sidewalks and curbing. And if you want more information, there's a handout on it in the vestibule.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Oh, yes, sorry, Kay Tonle.
What year was this?
What year was this street scheduled for maintenance in your Road Service Management System schedule?
Okay, it is scheduled in for 2025, had to cost approximately $550,000. So this will save 210,000 and that, the 550 was not doing all the sidewalk work we're looking at doing right now. So we're getting a lot more dollar, a lot more product for the dollars for 340 versus 550 in 2025.
Will it interfere with the other Pleasant Valley Grizzle Drive schedule? Are they being pushed back because we would push this one in front?
No.
And lastly, can it be done? Can they do their water sewer project without, you're saying it has to be done, but they do eight feet of the road, right? So the other half could, they could do the water sewer project without spending this money, correct?
That's correct. What, they could do the water, it's water and sewer, they could actually, the reason they're going to, they're going to reclaim and repave is because the amount of pipe work involved, that's, that's going to happen. So the engineer, Dufran Group, looks at this and is, rather than doing trench paving, it's more cost effective to actually reclaim the road, put the pipes in and repave the whole thing. You know, because you're talking actually paving the whole street versus a lot of patching. So we would, if we do, if we deny this, we will end up with a brand new paved road, but it will be on the existing material. So what, what the benefit is, in 2025, we will not have, if this does pass, we will not have to invest any funds to put gravel base underneath.
Any further questions? Yes. Back up on the hill.
I, I just want to stress that it's my understanding that this is not going to affect the tax rate. This is a transfer of funds for this purpose.
Shannon, is that an accurate description? Yes, yes. We, we have that money, we're moving it from one column to another. David, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, you know, the big problem with that, that area is that there's only one way in and one way out. And this board really needs to look at another opportunity to either push through to 121 or come around to Pond Road, so there's another way for the residents to exit that particular area. Because even if we do replace the roads and make them look much better, you're still looking at a lot of high traffic and the things are going to wear. So as soon as we fix it up, it's, it's going to be in need of repair again.
Are you ready for the question? All right. Article 27. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham vote to appropriate a transfer of $340,000 from the unassigned highway fund balance to the Town of Rockingham Highway Improvement Capital Reserve Fund with a transfer contingent on the Bellas Falls Village Corporation Board of Trustees contracting for the Burt Street and Blake Street Water and Sewer Main Improvements? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes appear to have it? The ayes do have it and you have adopted Article 27. We now come to that portion of the meeting where we can conduct other business that does not require the expenditure of funds. Article 28. To transact any other business deemed proper when not involving the expenditure of town funds or any other business acted upon in the preceding articles. What is your pleasure? Yes.
Hi, I'm Laurel Green. I live on Brockways Mills Road. And as some of you know, I'm very interested in reversing global warming. Many people are individually working to do their part in that regard, but to get the job done, it's a big job, right? So we're going to have to work together. And I just want to appreciate everyone in the town of Rockingham who voted to pass the Climate Solution Resolution in November. It passed by 76%. There are a lot of people in this town working on climate, getting the climate turned around. And in particular, I also want to, now we're going to be working to put those, the items in that resolution into the town energy plan. I'm working in cooperation with the Energy Committee to do that. Take a breath. The other thing is I just want to appreciate the work of the Energy Committee. They've been working with the town library and the town of Rockingham, in addition to the Village of Bellas Falls, previously have signed up to participate in the group net metering. And that's resulting in a $20,000 a year savings for our towns. Pretty big deal. So I just want to really appreciate that that's going on. A big thank you to Peter Bergstrom, in particular, who's the energy coordinator for our town. Thank you.
Is there any other business to brought, be brought before the meeting? Mr. Reese?
I just want to throw this one out for the town. This will send everyone probably running into the woods, but if you've been watching the marijuana situation in Vermont, I'm all in favor of keeping it away from the kids and stuff, but it's here and it's here to stay. And you have, have over 90,000 people have been using it, even though it's been illegal. The state of Vermont, I think it's going to be like maybe a 16% tax and giving towns or villages the opportunity to grab 1%. I'm 100% in favor of actually having our Development Director pursue one of the biggest indoor greenhouse growing facilities in the state of Vermont this way, to get the money out from being under the table. Law enforcement, one half agrees, the other half disagrees, but it's right in Massachusetts, myself, there's the facility there. The big role players from the cigarette companies to the beverage companies are just waiting for an opportunity and I swear by, the oils have helped me with my stress issues and my back issues and I'm all in favor of it. I know you're probably against it, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Any further matters to come before the meeting? Yes, Mr. Wright?
I'm Cass Wright. I'm your Town Animal Control Officer. I want to talk to you for a moment about our dog situation. I love dogs, that's why I do this work. Specifically, municipally speaking, we have had a slight worsening of the dog registration situation here in town. Your dogs need to be registered. No exception. If you own a dog, you got to register it.
And that's state law.
And that's state law. And I'm here to enforce it locally. You need to register your dog? Before you can register your dog, provided your dog is, I believe, seven months of age or more, that animal has to have a rabies inoculation. Okay? And the good news here is that we have a rabies clinic coming up, I believe, on March 16th, am I correct? Keep nodding, I think I'm correct. Yep. Keep nodding, I think I'm correct, yep. Uh, that begins at?
Ten thirty AM?
Ten thirty AM at the firehouse. It's a Saturday, I look forward to meeting all of you down there. I want to see you down there with your dogs. Look forward to meeting you and your dogs, shaking all of your hands and paws. And, uh, remember, you need this inoculation if you're gonna register your dog and you need to register your dog. Thank you.
Anything further?
You can clap, that's okay.
Any, any further business to come before the two thousand and nine indoor Rockingham Town Meeting? Mr. Hardy?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all, thank you for being civil, thank you for a wonderful conversation.